This meeting of council for Monday, April 20 is called to order. I have a motion for council to adopt the agenda of the April 20 regular meeting as presented. Counselor Butler? Second, Counselor Crogg? All in favor? So carried. I have a motion from council to adopt the minutes of the April 7th committee of the whole meeting as presented. Counselor Thompson? Second. Counselor Rushegan? All in favor? So carried. Again, may I have a motion from council to adopt the April 7th regular meeting minutes as presented? Counselor Rushegan, Counselor Thompson? All in favor? So carried. We'll now move on for the reports from our counselors, starting with Counselor Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't seem to get my microphone to turn on here.
It's on.
That's blinking. Anyways, I'll just talk loudly. I was absent from the previous meeting as I was out of town for 10 days on a family vacation, and I didn't turn my computer on once. I didn't have a telephone. I just enjoyed my time. But when I did get back, I took the time to review the video from the meetings that I missed and to discuss any questions that I had with the mayor. I was also absent from a rec commission meeting, but I met with Tom Spreedo, the rec director, to discuss the budget that was released and other issues as well. On Wednesday, the 15th, I attended the strategic planning session at City Hall. It was very beneficial. I enjoyed chatting with everyone about our vision for the future of Grand Forks, and I think it's something I'd like to spend more time doing. I thought it was great. Also, that evening, I attended the Biz After Biz, put on by the Chamber of Commerce at the new Work and Play, which looks fabulous, and congratulations to the local couple that's taken that on. On Thursday, the 16th, I attended the official opening of the recently renovated Pharmasave building. Again, local people doing great work. The building looks fabulous. The selection's great. It's a nice, modern look. And I'm looking forward to attending the AKBLG meeting this week in Nacasp. We'll be there for three days, meeting with representatives from other municipalities in the area. And that's off to my report.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
I'll talk loud, please. April 8th, I attended a presentation on asset management at Gallery 2. April 9th, Christina Benti and Caleb Moss, the former mayor and a current counselor of the town of Golden, facilitated a workshop for our council on system analysis and check-in. April 10th, I attended the following events: a tour of the Nature Trust property in the Overton Creek area and the Gilton Grasslands Class 8 Park. I also attended the grand opening of the Learning Garden, and that evening, attended a presentation by Dr. Mike Pearson on Where Water Matters. April 11th, I attended the annual general meeting of the Bondi Museum Society, and I am sorry to have to advise that Bob D'Mardelair, who was a valued member of not only the museum, but the Woodworkers Guild and an asset to the Fall Fair, passed away on Wednesday. April 15th, I participated in our strategic planning workshop, and I also attended the monthly meeting of the Phoenix Foundation of the Bondi Communities later that day. That's my report.
Thank you. Counselor Rushegan?
Thank you, Mr. ... Oh, mine works. For once. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple motions I want to make here this evening, and they all stem from the team building exercise that we had with Christina Benti and Caleb Moss. Is that the name? Yeah. And it was what I thought to be a very informational workshop that kind of gave us ideas on how to streamline processes to understand more so that these meetings are essentially business meetings of the corporation. We're making decisions, and individuals here that come in the gallery are watching us to make sure we're open and transparent in what we do. So I noticed that when it comes to the question period at the end, our procedure by law states that the question period is limited to only items on the agenda. But typically, we've been straying from that, allowing questions generalized to do with subject matter that has nothing to do with anything on the agenda. So the first motion I want to make is in regards to hopefully curbing the individual who speaks and asks the same question over and over again, you know, looking for a different result that has nothing to do with the agenda. So inasmuch as the council meeting is a business meeting of the corporation of the city of Grand Forks, and inasmuch as the gallery of said meetings are invited to observe the meetings, and further that at the conclusion of a meeting of council, the public is permitted to ask questions to council. Being resolved, the council reaffirms its current position that all questions asked during the question period of the public be directed to the mayor, and that they be on point and only in reference to an item on the agenda discussed during the meeting. Any other inquiry should be directed to the mayor outside of scheduled council meetings or brought forward as a delegation.
Do I have a second to that?
One second now.
Counselor Thompson? Does council wish to have any discussion on that subject? Or gaming out of the area? All in favor of that motion? So carried. Will you continue with your report, Counselor Rushegan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second motion I would like to make has to do with the committee of the whole, and it ties directly with this. So the second motion I have, inasmuch as the committee of the whole meetings are a functional, interactive meeting involving citizens of Grand Forks who are offered to participate as the meeting progresses, and further again, that at the conclusion of said meeting, there's a question period for the public. So being resolved that being that the public is already offered the opportunity to participate as the meeting is in session, the council directs staff to remove the questions from the public at the conclusion of the committee of the whole meeting, as it is in fact a redundancy, as the public has a chance to speak on agenda items as they are called, and further directs staff to make the necessary adjustments to the procedure by law as necessary. Again, if the public has concerns about issues outside of the agenda presented, they should either come as a delegation or make an appointment to speak to the mayor outside of council meetings.
May I have a second to that motion?
One second for discussion.
Discussion. Counselor Crogg?
Mine works. Look at that. Maybe. Maybe. I can see the rationale to the first motion, as we've dealt with that before at the business meeting, and just wondering the rationale for this. I know you tried to, or have explained it, as part of the motion, but I personally don't see it as an issue at the end of the evening because somebody may have a second thought about something. So I'm just wondering how that's going to benefit us if we remove that.
So you...
I think that's Theresa White.
Counselor Thompson? Counselor Rushegan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to the questions, I guess what I'm looking for here is, again, to curb the tangents that typically happen at the end of the committee of the whole, where we speak about this issue, that issue, and then the question period goes off in this direction completely different. Where our procedure by law states that we should be sticking to the agenda items that are there, and I think we're allowing a little bit too much leeway in terms of following on procedures by law. We've been told that, you know, if the city isn't going to follow its own rules, why are we asking citizens to do it? And this is just that. We have a policy in place, a procedure by law, that states that, you know, we should stay on point. Questions from the public should be directed only, questions should be only on agenda items. And being that during the committee of the whole, the individual has a chance to speak as the agenda items come up. So I think at the end of it, it's just a redundancy, in my opinion. Or if you were to keep it, then we make sure that we keep it on point to the agenda items. And if there's any other discussion, if someone wants to speak about the moon, then they make, you know, an appointment with the mayor, and they discuss it there, or it was a delegation. It's just those questions at the end go so far away from what should be discussed during the question period.
If I may just add, as mayor, I believe that the committee of the whole meeting, the public should be allowed to discuss certain items because that's their only chance to voice their opinions. At regular meetings, yes, they must refrain to items on the agenda. Now, having said that, should any items come up at the committee of the whole meeting which are completely off the wall, so to speak, then yes, they can either put their concerns in writing, or address it to myself, or to our CAO, so as to not go on forever and ever on items that have no relevance whatsoever to the discussions that we're having at the meeting.
Counselor Thompson?
I think, regrettably, what's caused this is that the opportunity for the public to participate with questions at the end of the committee of the whole has been somewhat abused. And issues that have been dealt with, that council has answered openly and honestly, but it isn't the response that the enquirer wants to hear, and so they continue to bring it back to the following meeting, is unfortunate because if we do adopt Counselor Rushegan's resolution, then it could preclude some very good observations or questions from individuals who have a legitimate and new concern that they want to ask about. How we can resolve this to the satisfaction of all of us, I just don't have any good answers to that.
Counselor Rushegan?
I see a broker. Oh, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. What I'm asking for, as you said, is for the questions at the end of the agenda to be removed. Currently, our procedure bylaws, our agendas are standardized. We use the same agenda format for regular meetings, for committee of the whole meetings, for encounter meetings. It's the same structure. So as it stands right now, our procedure by law only allows, even during the committee of the whole meeting, for those at the end to ask questions only to do with the agenda items, regardless. All I'm saying is that it becomes a redundancy, and I would like to see it removed. I would like to see a separate procedure by law for the committee of the whole, and a separate procedure by law for regular meetings. Because right now, it allows for any kind of discussion outside of the agenda, as it is right now, like you say, it has been abused in the past. So I'm just asking for that to be removed, and even if it is defeated, this motion will still not change the fact that questions cannot be anything quite to that to the agenda.
So are you referring to the procedure by law that you mentioned to be changed? Are you referring to it that there should be a separate procedure for the committee of the whole, which in fact will allow the public to speak on diversified issues, but not continually repeating previous issues?
No, quite the contrary. Well, I'm saying that there should be, yes, two different procedure by laws, two different agendas, formats for each meeting, but at this point, I would like to, like I said, leave us a redundancy, and inasmuch as we don't allow, or our procedure by law does not allow for other discussion outside of agenda items currently during the committee of the whole, even though we have allowed it, it is not allowed for it.
With all due respect, may I have your motion again, just so I can understand exactly what it was, the second one?
Yes, okay. I'll just try to sum it up here then. It's essentially be resolved that council rec staff remove the questions from the public at the conclusion of the committee of the whole meeting, as it is a redundancy, as the public currently has a chance to speak to the agenda items as they come forward.
Counselor Butler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Inasmuch as we have to advertise a change in our procedure by law, I don't see this to be a huge difference. I think your point is noted that we need to stick on topic for the committee of the whole meetings, but I think that the chair is able to keep people in line so they don't talk away their allotment of time that they're given, and I think we can, I appreciate public input at the meetings. I'd like to have it continued.
You notice the anyway?
Yes, and I also concur on the fact that we do not want the public to seem that we're cutting off their freedom of speech or their points of view because they do come to our meetings to participate. Once we eliminate that, then, again, we got to keep it within the realms of reality, though.
Mr. Mayor, nobody's actually saying that they can't speak. I'm saying they have the opportunity to speak the whole way through. So that's not taking anything away, so I appreciate that not being skewed, because by no means is that what the angle I'm going for. I'm saying they have the opportunity, and I appreciate the opportunity. I wish they'd be more involved during the discussion as the agenda item comes up, as opposed to waiting to the end to discuss it.
Okay, so how do you feel about the fact of discussing other issues that were not on the agenda of the committee of the whole meeting at the end?
Well, that would be just a point of order because it doesn't do with my motion. I have a completely different motion altogether if we were to change that.
Counselor Crogg?
Anybody else want to speak?
Somebody wants to be heard?
Okay, we're happening now. I don't stand on ceremony too much, really. I don't know why. I like the openness that members, like you say, they can comment on agenda items while we're actually discussing agenda items, but I do like the, even though our by law says that it's supposed to stick to agenda items, I enjoy the freewheeling, I guess, what you would call it, and then just would hope that the chair could control it if it gave it out of control. But I always look at, what if it's not on the agenda, but it's current, or it's from last agenda? If it was on last agenda, can I still speak to it under the minutes of the last agenda, right? So I would just, you know, I just don't like it.
Counselor Butler?
I think we've had a good discussion on it. I'd like to call a question.
So all in favor of that motion? All opposed? Motion was defeated. Counselor Rushegan, do you have any further on your report?
Yeah, you have one last motion here. Inasmuch as council reports have become an opportunity for certain members of council to grant standing, further inasmuch as many communities have done away with the council report agenda item in effort to streamline the process. And while I feel that for some council reports are an important part of what they perceive as important to the agenda, being resolved that all council reports other than motions be no longer in the verbal, but only in the written, and if a council member chooses to have a council report, it should be written and submitted to the agenda, no later than the Wednesday before a council meeting, to be attached to the agenda package for those interested to read at their leisure. This will remove the grant standing that has become a regular part of our council reports, but still include the agenda and streamline the process.
May I have a second on that motion? Counselor Crogg, second. Discussion. Counselor Crogg?
My first was, Thompson, hearing that was, I don't have to write it down. That's a lot like work. Remember I said that whole freewheeling thing? Yeah, that doesn't... Yeah, I guess I can see the point because the people that aren't gallery but have access to the agenda online can actually read the reports if they happen to miss tuning live or appearing here live. So rather than just condensed in the minutes, it'll be more work for me, but I think it might be worth a try.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I was just wondering if perhaps Mr. Rushegan can give us a better understanding of what he refers to as grant standing?
Counselor Rushegan, but stay within the parameters.
I believe it's self-explanatory.
Well done. Any other discussion?
Counselor Butler?
I don't know if I interpreted Counselor Rushegan's statement the same as Counselor Ross did, but I appreciate hearing everybody's input from their reports, even if it is a little bit off the agenda items. I think we've got some intelligent people at this table that have got some good insights, and I guess there's something to learn from it, so I'd like it to continue.
Counselor Rushegan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. Again, I'm not saying do away with the council reports, I'm just saying put them in the written as opposed to the verbal. They're not disappearing. They're just going under a different, just, I'm looking for, just to give you that differently, is what I'm asking for. And this was the advice that we were given by the council office that provided to the city.
Counselor Crogg?
Yeah, the one nice thing about the verbal reports is that council has a chance to ask questions. I can see this being the same, that I can read Counselor Rushegan's report, and if I have any questions and that's part of the agenda, then I would ask him that based on the written report. So I concur with the motion.
Counselor Thompson?
I hope everybody noticed that my report tonight was shortened to the point of... I'm paranoid.
To our CEO, Mr. Ross.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask, if we could ask for clarity for, to take place as of when, to start as of when, because I think that this is, if the motion goes through tonight, that would just basically ask that all the council reports, and the rest of the people would know.
Yeah, that would terminate the rest of the reports this evening, exactly.
Effective after.
Counselor Ross?
Yeah, I have no problem with submitting my written report. I just think that it's also opportunity for people to grant stand in writing. Sure. And, you know, honestly, if somebody's going to be writing a 2,000-word report or 3,000-word report, and with cutting and pasting with facts from the internet and eh eh sites, I'm not really interested in reading that. I'm not interested in hearing it either. I think we need to be fairly concise, so I just think there's, perhaps, or also should be some parameters around that as well. And I think we should be reasonable people here, mature, reasonable, intelligent folks that are grounded and should understand what a brief, maybe we need to say a brief, report actually entails. I just, I find it a little bit elementary that we have to discuss what a report is.
Any other discussion? Counselor Butler?
In the interest of being brief on our reports, no question.
All in favor? All opposed?
Yeah, so it's not carried? Oh, yes. Sorry. So, seeing as we didn't implement this yet tonight, Counselor Rushegan, are you complete?
I am complete, thank you.
Have you done that, Stan?
Counselor Ross?
Okay, well, not having a clear idea of what grant standing actually is. Yeah, I just want to congratulate the staff for preparing the asset management public presentation. I was only able to drop in very briefly because I had another meeting that night, but the detail that our staff invested to prepare for the event was really impressive, and I just want to acknowledge that. I'm sorry I couldn't stay for the entire evening, but I heard it was a great success. I really enjoyed the team building event that we had, the workshop where the previous mayor and current counselor from Golden gave pertinent advice on counselor conduct, meeting protocols, and other due symptoms that help counselors better serve their constituency. I found it very transparent, the way that they spoke to us, and I learned a lot, and it was very useful. I'd like to thank staff for organizing that as well. I enjoyed the Learning Garden grand opening. It was a good indication of what our community is absolutely hungry for. It was very well attended by both young and old. There was a notable attendance of young families, which was really fun, and we were able to make the first garden at that event, so we need more of that. It was positive, and it was fun, and very, yeah, just like to see more of that. That's what our town seems to be hungry for and what we need to see. I was really enjoyed, and this is not grant standing, attending an event in Castle Guard to hear Naomi Klein speak about climate change and disaster capitalism. And just as we moved forward with the change of planning and asset management, she emphasized that we can't buy ourselves out of climate disaster, and that solutions have to happen in our communities and have to involve more than recycling, a simple lifestyle changes. It means we have to be courageous as we make decisions at the community level. On April 14th, I went to the RDKB Area D Community Plan Event, where they showcased their first draft. It was held at the seniors hall at City Park. It was very well attended by citizens from Area D, and then there was a discussion about the current state and the future of agriculture in Area D, including potential changes and changes to the ALR and the agricultural land reserve and the agricultural land commission. Also, lots of discussion on the parks and trails, and discussion around partnering more, communicating more with the city of Grand Forks, because Area D really feels very much that we are part of the city as well as part of the country. They presented some of the relevant sections from the current draft of the official community plan for rural Grand Forks, and those are available online. And April 15th was strategic planning and all-day event, and another entry and opportunity for our council. Thank you.
Counselor Hammond?
Hey. On April the 8th, I attended the asset management presentation at Gallery 2. Christina Benti, Urban Systems, and our own CAO, Mr. Allen, did an excellent presentation showing the need for our infrastructure replacement, our costs. If anybody had any questions about anything to do with the city, that was a good place to get the answers. It was very transparent. It talked about costs, it talked about our budget, how much it would take to replace some of our infrastructure, and the best way to get there. On April the 9th, we had a team building workshop here with Christina Benti and Caleb Moss, which we were all part of. April the 10th, Counselor Thompson accompanied me on the Gilton-Moss Lake field trip, Barry, Randall, and other concerned people came, and we looked at some of the watershed management problems on some of the lakes. The fence that he rebuilt out of Lost Lake, the fence used to be in the lake, and now it's back 30 feet, and there's still one side of the lake that needs to be protected because the fence is still there on that side. Later that afternoon, we attended a Learning Garden ceremony, round breaking that evening, Water Matters presentation at Seniors Park, and there was an announcement made prior to that meeting starting, that Nature's Trust had come through with the funding for fencing for the Nature's Trust land of the Gilton Grasslands, which was good news. They were short $1,000, and we're looking for donations, so if anybody can assist, it's wonderful. It also showed the need for repairing areas alongside our river systems, which is really important, and they're going to hear a lot more about that. April the 15th, CLD strategic planning session. It was a good, a very good workshop. April the 15th, Biz After Dis at Work and Play. I'm very impressed with Amber Store and what she's done with it, and I think she's going to, I wish her all the best, but I think she's going to have great success. April 16th was Pharmasave. April 16th was the Farm Save Grand Opening after the renovations, and it's looking great. Tomorrow, we're leaving for Nacasp for the AKV LGA GM, so I will not be attending the Deer Count that's happening at 6 o'clock in the morning, and the Deer Committee meeting at 11 o'clock, or the Chamber Board meeting in the afternoon. And I usually keep my reports brief, but I'm quite concerned about an issue that's happening right now regarding the CBC interview with Donald Ferrand. Recently, there was a CBC radio interview with Donald Ferrand questioning the retiring of our CAO Doug Allen. I'm totally dismayed that this is still an issue and that there are still some people out there who continue to try and expose conspiracy with this issue. When I decided to run for council, I was looking forward to working with Mr. Allen. I was extremely disappointed to find out that within a week of the election, a mutual agreement between the past council and Mr. Allen had been made to terminate his employment. The behavior of a minority of residents and non-residents over the installation of water meters was appalling, such that bullying, intimidation, harassment, and threats were directed towards Mr. Allen and his family. WorkSafe BC would not tolerate such behavior in the workplace, and our past council agreed that they could not force someone to work in an unsafe environment. Our new council languished meeting after meeting for several months, with our gallery taken over by anti-water meter protesters. Eventually, we began to see more and more support of these meetings by residents who supported the issue. So in order to get back on track with city business, we made a motion to continue with the water meter installations as outlined in the contract with Neptune. During this time, staff morale was at an all-time low, and the city was at risk of losing some very competent and dedicated staff. This council was tasked with hiring a new CAO. We received approximately 40 resumes, shortlisted to six, and interviewed five by Skype. Although there were a few very good candidates, not one came close to Mr. Allen. He had the background, the history, and the knowledge that was required to put Grand Forks back on track. He was also working in the background as a consultant to the city as per the terms of his severance package. Mr. Allen is well-respected in the province and had developed an asset management plan that ranked Grand Forks in the top nine communities in DC. I saw more positive action taken in Grand Forks during Mr. Allen's two years as CAO than any of the previous administrations that I had experienced. So when a motion was made to contact him to see if he'd be interested, the majority of council voted yes. With the water meter issue behind us now, Mr. Allen agreed. This council negotiated a very fair contract for the city for Mr. Allen's return, much less than if we hired a new CAO and felt that we made the best decision for this community. Less salary, less vacation time, 400 hours of overtime, a three-year contract instead of two at the local wage. The severance package was paid, would still have been spent regardless of who was hired. Was I entirely happy with this arrangement? No. Did I think it was the best possible scenario for our city? Yes. I, for one, could not in good conscience uproot another family and bring them here without them knowing the full background of what had transpired during the previous year. A new CAO would have cost us relocation expenses, taken time to get up to speed, and there would have been lack of continuity with the work in place. I know that some of those who were the most outspoken with regards to the water meters are not happy with Mr. Allen's back, but to paraphrase someone else's comments, to keep pulling the scab off the wound is only giving Grand Forks a black eye. If Mr. Ferrand proceeds with his request for an investigation by the Attorney General, the taxpayers need to know that the cost to the city will be upwards of $100,000. I'm extremely dismayed at how a few individuals can create such havoc. If you have questions, call a counselor. Come to council meetings, watch the videos. Come to our open houses and workshops, read the press releases, but please don't post uninformed information on social media, which leads to more speculation. Council is trying to make the best possible decisions for this community, but find ourselves continually having to spend our time putting out fires. Being on council is no easy task. There is an infinite number of issues that come before us, and we endeavor to make decisions that are in the best interest of the majority in our community. We understand that we'll never be able to please everyone, so acknowledging your support when you're happy with the decision goes a long way in affirming that we're doing the right thing.
Counselor Crook, other than your RDKB report, do you have a report?
I have nothing to do to add.
As mayor, I would just like to say that I echo the reports of the counselors, and I would just like to congratulate our local entrepreneurs and merchants. Hopefully, their endeavors will set a precedent for others. I'd like to thank all of council for their reports. May I have a motion to receive reports, Counselor Wershagen and Counselor Ross? Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask Counselor Hammond about the Deer Committee. I noticed that there's been some other deers in town that have had their fur chafed off by the collars around them, and I'm just hoping that those collars will be removed soon. Just if you could clarify that.
We're getting off course a bit here.
It was in her report.
There's nothing to do with collars.
Deer committee, small, no deal.
So, is there any other further discussion or anything for this? Seeing as this is the last verbal. All in favor? So carried. We now will have a report from our RDKB representative, Mr. Counsel Crook.
There have been no meetings since our last meeting.
Yeah, and I was still looking forward to it.
I was going to write that. I was going to write that. No, we haven't had any meetings since then.
So there's nothing to say?
No.
Discussion up. Thank you for your non-report.
I'm sure you see that.
May I have a motion to receive a non-report? Counselor Wershagen, Counselor Thompson, all in favor? So carried. Okay, we'll now move on to our information items. I'd like to have a motion for council to receive the CRIB survey for information, which is our Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program.
Hello?
Counselor Thompson. Counselor Crook. Do we want to have any summary? All in favor to receive the information. So carried. We now move on to our bylaws section, and our Chief Financial Officer, Roxanne Shepherd, will be CEO and asking council to take a motion to receive the first three readings for 2015 tax rates by law 2012. May I have a motion? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Wershagen. Any discussion? Counselor Budman.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just as much as I missed the last meeting, I did watch it, and the budget was set, and I know that by the budget that we've set, we do need to increase taxes by what this rate is proposing. However, I wasn't in favor of the budget increase that was put forward, so I will be voting against this motion. I also realize that there's business owners in the community that have concerns with these rate increases as well as residents on first-hand counters, so I'll have to vote against it.
Is there any other discussions? All in favor? All opposed? Counselor Budman. So carried. Again, from our Chief Financial Officer, the 2015 wastewater rates amendment, that council give first three readings to by law 2013 sewer regulations amendment 2015. May I have a motion for that? Counselor Wershagen, Counselor Thompson. Any discussion or debate? All in favor? So carried. Now, from our Manager of Development Engineering Department, is to amend the current zoning bylaw by adding permitted use of tool and equipment rented facilities, the I-2 general industrial zone. I'm recommending council give a third reading to the zoning bylaw amendment 1606-82 2015, and continue with the statutory requirements for amending bylaws in accordance with the Local Government Act. May I have a motion for that? Counselor Wershagen. Counselor Budman. Any discussion or debate? Counselor Wershagen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to go through a little couple of hearings over there tonight, and I'll make sure that's worked.
Thank you. Is there any other discussions or debate on this issue? All in favor? So carried. Again, from our Management Development Engineering Department, to amend the current zoning bylaw by rezoning the property located at 832-64th Avenue from the current R1 single and two-family residential to R4 rural residential, and review the Sustainable Community Plan designation to determine if an amendment is required. And I recommend council give the first and second readings to the city of Grand Forks zoning bylaw amendment number 1606-83 2015, and proceed with the statutory requirements for amending the bylaws in the Local Government Act. May I have a motion to that? Counselor Crook, Counselor Budman. Any discussion or debate? All in favor? So carried. From our Chief Financial Officer Department, the 2015 Water Rates Amendment, recommend that council give first three readings to by law 2014 Water Regulation Amendment 2015. May I have a motion? Counselor Thompson. Have a second. Counselor Wershagen. Any discussion or debate? Counselor Budman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for staff in, I think it's Schedule A here. It talks about installation of water meters to be at cost by the contractor, including any additional service costs. I imagine Section D plus 15 percent. I'm just curious, is that 15 percent coming to the city?
To our CEO, Mr. Allen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's a cost for the implementation of the, for the Finance Department to implement that into the software program, so there's time that's considered to be applicable to that. So for us, the answer is yes. It's received by the city.
Is there any question, Counselor Budman?
Yes.
Counselor Budman.
Just another question. On the manual recharge, I think it's $25 per reading, being as water meters has been such a controversial issue in our town, especially with RF radiation. I think there's people that might want to opt out for the non-radio read meters, but such a cost is quite prohibitive. I know in other countries, they have a reading just twice a year. In New Zealand, for example, in which case, $25 might not be so much, but as a bi-monthly reading seems quite prohibitive.
Counselor Thompson.
There is a cost associated with employee wages to take the time to go and read those meters, if that's the case, and they will probably be contiguous, and there's costs of operating the vehicle, and the manual input of those readings into the utility billing system. So all of those things taken into consideration, I don't think it's an exorbitant fee at all.
Let me just address staff on a question on that. Was there, maybe I'm wrong, was there never a discussion about doing an estimated reading, or is it only applicable to the hydro meters today?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the one thing we looked at with our utility billing is, is council has a process for our utility bill for whatever, two months. So the estimated reading would be, there could be an estimated reading be done in there, but the other thing is, we have to, we have to pay for our carbon footprint, so we have the care reporting we do each year. Every time we create, we go beyond our carbon neutrality, we pay into, we used to go into Darkwood or?
Yeah.
Darkwoods. It used to be the VC Carbon Trust, but we elected to move away from that. And we actually, when we're non-carbon neutral, we actually pay into our own reserves. So if council decides to move into a carbon-neutral project in our community, so council has the bylaws, so they have a reserve going in each year. So when we don't achieve carbon neutrality, we pay into that. So when we go and do manual reads of our vehicles, we create more of a carbon footprint, so we actually pay ourselves, we can offset that, so council can set that. So there is the ability to estimate, but in order for people to get accurate billing, they're going to want to have a, do what that's likely to be.
Are we not getting ahead of ourselves, though, because we do have options out there now regarding the water rate rates, so we're spinning our wheels here on this one, are we not?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the situation right now is just the, just housekeeping on the items that were already in the bylaw, which were in the water rate bylaw, which already existed. So we're just, we're moving ahead of ourselves, like you said. This is just existing situations that are already there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Budman.
I'm just curious, the city has a price of $4 per cubic meter for bulk water sales. I'm just wondering who we are selling water to at this point?
To our CEO, Mr. Allen.
Mr. Mayor, when a contractor comes into town and they want to fill up their truck for, working for a private customer for dust control perhaps, or for flushing of a sewer line in a regional area, they come, they fill up at our filling station, so it'd be that amount for the bulk amount.
Are we giving them gray water that we recoup when they're flushing sewers or so, or are we making a distinction there? Are we just giving them right over the tub?
Right over the tub, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification, if we vote on this, does that mean that this meter read, manual meter read, once we vote on this, it's going to be set at $25? Once we vote in favor of this? Or is this just?
Yeah, we're giving the first three readings, and we understand the recommendation, so we can...
Does this have to come from the Water Committee, so?
To our CEO, Mr. Allen.
Mr. Mayor, this is a pre-existing situation. What we're talking about is, this is by law 1973, which is pre-existing rates from, I believe, 2014. What we're talking about is amending the water rate. So we're talking, the other elements could be reviewed through the Water Rates Committee, and these things for council is looking at the business case for the delivery of water in our community. What we're really talking about here today is the city's water rates. We're not talking about pre-existing things. So the $25 fee was already in the bylaw. That already existed in the bylaw.
If council's not sure of this, we can send it back to staff for information. Counselor Thompson.
Through you two staff, this is just intended as bylaw, is not the service charges that we are amending. It is the rate that we are charging on a bylaw basis, which is, for residential, at this point in time, is flat rate.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, that's absolutely correct.
So that's all we're being asked to consider tonight. These other service charges are already included in the existing bylaw, and that is not anything that we're dealing with tonight. We're only dealing with the actual rates of the service, to provide that service to our citizens.
So are we looking at the water rates on a flat rate basis at this point in time?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we're talking about the flat rates for 2015, which included a, I believe there's $10,000 going into the water reserve this year as a result of those, that rate increase that was presented to the committee the whole. The discussion was that the Chief Financial Officer hasn't been able to develop a long-term financial strategy, what the actual rates are going to need to be to sustain the utility. The, so she did a projection for a small amount to go into reserves this year for council to be proactive. So, and that policy will be coming forward to council and the public, over the next, over the next year. So this is just simply the 2015 water rate.
I'm confused, why are we dealing with readouts of a $25 fee? Why is that included in there?
It's part of Schedule A, but it wasn't really relevant to this. It already existed in Schedule A. The bylaw is just being amended to include the 2015 rate. Flat rate.
Counselor Budman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I don't have any problem with the water rates, as I even said. I think they look quite fair. The only reason I was bringing this up is because any time a bylaw comes back to the table, we do have the option to amend it at that time. I also just have a quick question for Mr. Allen, if he could clarify to the public. There has been a change to the ownership of the meters. It says at the end of Point Four, that the water meters shall remain the property of the city of Grand Forks. This is a new addition, so if he could just clarify for the citizens.
Why are you keeping quite a word here? Are we discussing water meters or water meter rates?
It's under bylaw 2.4, page 119, according to the... It's under bylaw 240, page 119, according to the...
Deviating around.
Sorry, page, um...
109.
Yeah, I'm page 109. There's just been an amendment made here to the ownership of the meters, I believe, for a certain reason that was brought forward by members of the public.
Can I direct this question to staff?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that was a commitment that we made to address that issue that was, wasn't clarified as to who the ownership of the meter really belonged to. And it maintains the property of the city, just like the electrical meters and the water meter will maintain the electric meter. Belonged to the city of Grand Forks. So we will repair them, we will replace them as needed.
I fail to see the prudence of that. Question, we're dealing with water rates, amended rates. Why are we talking about water meters, per se?
We were just doing a housekeeping item within the bylaw itself because it was a situation that we talked to our municipal insurance association about. So we wanted to make sure we reduced our liability when it came to this situation. It was raised by a letter that came in through the public and we researched it and it turned out to be a factual revelation to the city. In order for us to address this, it was just simply one word to be clarified, that the homeowner didn't take any responsibility with this, just alleviating that situation at this time.
Can all that not be addressed with a resolution that Counselor Ruschigan made? Where is more options going to be coming out? I mean, we're dealing again with something ahead of our time.
But I think it's sort of brought up at our last meeting, I think we were made aware of that. And that this change was talked about, and I believe counsel did indicate that they supported that.
Counselor Crogg.
Yeah, just a note. I just want to go back to this. Now, the, my understanding that $25 meter fee that's in this existing one was if you wanted to have your meter ran at extra, that was my understanding of why that charge was in there.
Mr. Mayor, it's the, if you offer the touchpad read in the program, you could pay to have somebody come read it.
Yeah, but again, we're talking about something that's not even there yet.
Yeah, that was already existing in the bylaw from, you're right. It was something that was existing prior to this discussion. But really this discussion is, there was a housekeeping item for the, for the ownership of the meter to make sure there was no liability on the, on the homeowner, because that was discussed with counsel. They want to alleviate the homeowner to that concern. And the other thing was the, the rates for 2015. So really this is just...
Yeah, based on, because it's coming from our Chief Financial Officer's Department, we should be dealing just with the rates.
Yes, but she's also the person, she wears many hats, so she's also the municipal insurance representative for our organization. Certainly, she needs to address that to, to ensure there was no liability on the resident property. So this is just housekeeping to alleviate any concern from the public.
Thank you.
Call the question.
All in favor of that motion? So carried. We have no other items. So now I will direct questions from the public towards counsel and myself. Is there any members of the public that, or media, that would like to have any questions or concerns or debates? Gentlemen in the front.
Evening, Mr. Washington. Good evening, counselors. My name is Nigel James. I've been a resident of Grand Forks for about six years. Firstly, the celebration, celebration of life of last year, that I hope it announces his late, his name breaking, is on Friday this week. People would care to go trick at the museum. Certainly, when we've been mentioning meters, I would have thought the provider of the utility is the owner of the meter. In every case. Someone mentioned grandstanding. I, it is perhaps not included in the agenda of today's meeting, but grandstanding has been raised. And I read from the minutes of the meeting on the April the 7th, and it was a request for decision by the fire chief. As you probably know, I am not in favor of a new 100-foot ladder truck. Or is it 35 meters? Perhaps we should adopt the international system of units and have done. It reminds me of a bit like the fast ferries piasco. Where, yeah, we get the ferries and then, oh, goodness me, we can't drive them flat out because they wash the banks. And then we, we can't park, we can't get them into the harbors because the harbors need to be adjusted. Why, I ask, wasn't the, the total cost of the fire truck and its requirements considered as part of the project? I feel it last, last week, the last two weeks, when seniors came to ask for $400 for chickens or turkeys, we said, ah, it's got to be for the benefit of all. The alteration to the fire department's efforts, I suspect it's merely for the fire departments with F the requirements, really. It is reasonable that the new truck is apparently about 15 foot longer than the existing truck. But why hadn't they thought about this aspect before they put in the order? There is also already, two trees have been chopped down. Now, it wasn't this council's policy, nor the previous council. I think the council policies previously to that, that any, when any tree is cut down in Grand Forks, a new tree won't be planted. I noted there are two being chopped down outside of the firewall and one outside of the seniors center. So I would hope that three trees are going to go in. Oh, and there's also that tree that was taken down near Holy School about four years ago. And that needs, there needs one to be replanted for that one. That's enough of the fire truck, really, excepting, oh, to read the thing grandstanding, yes, very good. And this is from the fire chief's submission for request for decision. It's proposed that there would only be one wide entrance in the middle of the lot to make, to easily assist the larger apparatus. The island and the trees would have to be removed to accommodate the entrance. Additionally, additionally, the middle row of 18 parking stalls would have to be eliminated to account, to accommodate the driving, pardon me, driving lane. I have problems with my eyes, getting on the same line, but anyway, let, please bear with me. Stalls with volunteers we forced to park about 20 feet away in the fireman's parking lot, creating a delay in response. Today, I walked from Sagamote Park parking lot where they would probably park their cars. It took me 25 seconds to walk where they previously were parked. That's grandstanding, in my view.
I must caution you, I'm going to have to call time in real short.
Certainly, all right.
And you are deviating from the subject.
All right. Anyway, we move on. If the comment, if the motion by, although it was defeated, I think, from Counselor Ruschigan about, we're only allowed to raise comments about what was in the agenda. I have expressed my views several times over the past three or four years, that the council is supposed to be responsible for various elements, and therefore we know who to go to. At present, I have six counselors and one mayor. So therefore, if we're going to go to speak on any topic, then I would like to know who's going to be looking after, shall we say, public works, and who's going to look after something else and so on, so I can address it to the correct person. If they aren't nominated in any form, then I will address all six at my leisure, and if it's 2 o'clock in the morning, that's their hard luck. If they, if they've got to make themselves available for this, if we're going to be addressing comments, et cetera, and whether it's 3 o'clock in the afternoon at City Hall or whatever else, it should ought to be published when the counselors are available to be spoken to. Or should I say, let me rephrase that, when we can discuss the matters in hand.
Where it can be forwarded in writing, which will then be addressed to our CEO and staff.
Right. The comment made by Counselor Ruschigan, it appears as though he wants to have the public gagged. And previously, and I've been looking through the minutes I've been bringing of the time, it was under the last, under the last council, right at the top, it was, we want the public to express their opinions and so on. It was on every single edition. I don't seem to see, I don't see it here now. And if you don't get input from the public, you will, I think, be very well, you'll be, you will suffer. I really think you will suffer. It's important to keep the dialogue going.
I must add that, that is your perception of, you now believe Counselor Ruschigan stated that he wanted the public gagged?
No, he didn't. However, it, by putting everything in writing, now, and what we can do in writing is, yes, that's a good idea. For instance, when I was employed by the federal government, if I went away on a course or anything like that, I had to produce an after-course report in writing. And over the last couple of years, Counselor Ruschigan has been educated at our expense. He asked for monies, and though two years to go, two years ago and last year, I think it was, maybe I'm a year out. And as yet, we haven't seen what he did, how he did it, and whatever else. And we haven't seen any benefit to Grand Forks in the money that we spent on Counselor Ruschigan's efforts.
I must caution you now, because now you're definitely deviating from any subjects that we're discussing here.
Well, I'm talking about writing reports. And that, I suspect, I believe, I would like to see a report written by Counselor Ruschigan into the two events that he took part in at my expense and our expenses, and what benefit the Grand Forks has received as a result of those, those educational courses.
And, Mr. Knight, what do you have?
I've got to time. Yes or no? I realize that time is limited. However, this might be my last chance of actually addressing the council, and it might be the last time I even bother to do it. However, I will be writing lots of letters. And what is, what is the city's policy on regarding how fast communications are responded to the person who sent?
May I direct that to staff?
Mr. Mayor, I have to look at the policy right now, but I can give an answer.
What we used to do in the Department of National Defense, within 24 hours, you received an acknowledgement and the answer, or you just received acknowledgement and the answer will be coming in the estimate of the number of time, the number of days or whatever.
We don't respect that like we're courtesy. That's not necessary, this seems everywhere else.
It may not be, but it's common courtesy, and it's something that we suffer from or lack of in this, in this town, in the city, I believe. Anyway, enough said. The other thing about the water rates, I would suggest that you, people might wait until the water commit, the volunteer water committee has met and decided and analyzed the figures and recommend them for council. That's basically it. Oh, the only other thing is, I'll be writing to the council, or the mayor, actually, so that we can have a game of cricket on City Park in July. It'll be, I don't know, the expat or the Englanders, if there are enough of us, and against the Indians, who, they're ones from India, by the way, not from, not from the Aboriginals. And all I can say is we're going to get hammered.
Yes, definitely.
Just responding to your previous second-to-last question, the water rates amendment was based, again, as we had stated, on the flat rates right now. The Water Rates Committee has nothing to do with that until such a time that the meters are in effect. Am I correct, Mr. Allen?
Thank you. The committee hasn't yet. I volunteered for it. I was the first to volunteer. I haven't heard a dicky about it.
Well, they hold no bearing on this particular bylaw right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the gallery?
Yeah, I was kind of rushed in the beginning because of the late start and everything. So while I'm working, I'm really not paying attention and not, the first part of the meeting...
We know where you are for the record.
Les Johnson, GFTV taxpayer. I just wanted to clarify the thing about reports. Are they going to be written or are they going to be read out? And just wanted to make sure I got that right from now on. So, written?
They're going to be written.
They're going to be written. Okay. Okay, just so people know that. The other thing was, Christina Bente, when, from America Golden at your open house, she was saying that city councils have to do more to communicate with the voters, that way things work smoother, et cetera. And she was talking about public engagement and social networking. And I see a number of people out there on Facebook, the primary social network that seems to be running around here, and they keep going on about how counselors, counselors should be on Facebook. And really, I don't think you should. You're really taking your political career in your hand by stepping on the Facebook and commenting. But I did send a letter to Sarah, I haven't talked to her about it yet, but you should look at the Grand Forks, North Dakota, public information Facebook page. They put posts up there, sometimes two or three a day. They, they put booster posts up there for things that are happening in the community. They aren't even city council or city hall inspired, but they definitely have a lot of things about City Hall as well. And the way that they operate that page is that you can like these things, but you can't comment. Because that's the problem with Facebook, is that if you let them comment, you no longer control the conversation. So whoever's got a gripe with you, tears you down and controls it. They don't let anybody comment on their page, and I think it works well for them, but I don't know, I'm not in that town, but you should take it. Anyways, that's it.
Gentlemen in the front.
My name's Alan. Just a couple of things. First of all, changing ownership of the meters, while relevant, does not address the issues of a potential declining of the insurance claims, causes insured interest and so on. It does not truly address, there's a lot more I've sent. An email to all the pertinent people, if they care to read that, they see the issue which leaves the city open to being sued via subrogation if there are claims. Okay, going on, I'm just bringing that up. The amended bylaw, the public now pay for their meters that do not have ownership. This is from taxation, right? From taxation, they're being pulled, but the city has to pay, so that's taxation. Hopefully, that will be added to the total of taxes, so we can see just how much the taxes are going up this year. We want to see that, so we can see clearly how much the taxes increased. And there was a comment by the honorable, he was the CEO, Chief Administrator, that we have to pay for our own carbon footprint. Actually, there is no, after the Keoro Accord was canceled by Prime Minister Harper, you don't have to pay, but you're doing that if you want to. So that's something I suggested quite last year, that we should get out of having to pay for the carbon footprint. In any case, if we do have to pay for the carbon footprint, as Counselor, Chris, sorry, Thompson, Counselor Thompson says, you know, we want to reduce the carbon footprint, you've got to pay for a man to come and look at it, you've got to pay a vehicle to, you can't walk and so on. Well, then Counselor Butler said, twice a year, instead, that would reduce the carbon footprint. It was only twice a year. So that seems to me a fair point. And one last thing is, just to bring up once more, that old flogging is not a dead horse, it's a dying horse, ENF danger, which is all over, and there's many, many people making claims and discovering they're getting cancer, and it's been put down to this ENF. To increase the ENF is, is creating a problem for the citizens of this city. So I would say, and it would be a recommendation, exhortation, look at this, look into it heavily. And the work of Barry Truer, who was, what would you call him? He was a British soldier involved in using ENF rays as weapons. And now that's another issue, and by all this networking of ENF is creating all kinds of things, problems. And so I just urge you to look into that. And I guess that's all I really need to say at this time. And one last question, did I hear you say you're charging $4 per cubic foot of water? $4?
Per cubic meter.
Oh, cubic meter. Okay, that's not quite as bad. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen in the second row.
Counselor and Mayor, I'm Larry Plomore. I just have a couple of questions. One is, you're talking carbon on vehicles and reading a meter... One is, you're talking carbon on vehicles and reading a meter costing $25 if you don't pull ground in, right? Someone has to come and read it, so they're going to charge you $25. Is that what was brought up?
Yes.
Yes, that's the question.
Okay. I haven't heard an answer.
Yes.
Okay, now...
Are you in the bylaw, Mayor?
Okay, now, what about we start charging our workers $25 from going from their job site to, and have their coffee breaks and back each time? We're spending a lot of money for carbon and fuel and time for them driving back and forth, for taking a 15-minute coffee break. I don't believe it.
Are there any other questions concerning the agendas?
Well, we should maybe put something into a policy here that something's got to be done about it. There's a lot of money being wasted, and you're talking carbon, there's a lot of carbon being used. So, I'm just leaving that up to you guys, you guys think about it. Something should have to be done about it.
Appreciate it. Councilor Butler.
Just a question for staff, do our employees take their lunch breaks by going back to the work yard, or their coffee breaks, going back and forth?
Mr. Mayor, the collective agreement, the collective agreement speaks to what we're allowed to do, and the employees are not to be traveling to and from the garage or the shop or the coffee break. If they're doing that, they're a contravention of the collective agreement. There's already been a memo sent out in that respect. We're actually moving towards a, you know, fuel management system on our vehicles that will better understand how our fuel is being consumed. But there is, there is pros and cons in the work, but we don't feel that we have any, at this point right now, there has been, basically, being addressed by the organization. So, I'll leave it at that, it's not for public discussion at this point.
Thank you for the clarification. I guess it would be like the RCMP going to Dunkin' Donuts. Any other questions?
That's it.
Thank you.
I'm out of here. Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Any other questions from the gallery? Gentlemen in the front.
Peter Matheson, I just, I just find that I'm a little bit disappointed that I won't hear individual councillors, little personal tidbits and pieces of information that I've found really enjoyable. Just a comment, thanks.
I'm going to say amen, because I agree there's a character that comes out. Your personalities come out of you saying the report.
One can never know what the future holds for us. Any other questions or concerns from the gallery? In that case, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Councillor Ross, all in favor? So carried.